Nice.
We're considering for eighty eight. They know it's a regular company or state branch. Uh, it's like the biggest black of the United States of America. In fifty three miles which is dense. One day under God, individuals will look at things as this for all. First item on our agenda is the consistency of the police department. Uh, and the approval label twenty four city council meeting minutes.
Anybody seen one? Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve claim ordinance. Year one oh four two three. April twenty fourth city council.
Yes, we've been mostly to approve the time of ordinance. Eight zero one, eight zero four two three. And approval of the twenty four city council minutes. So, any questions? Any discussion over these? All right. Most. Right, most here. Next part of the meeting is. The Department of Commerce, Customs, and Delegations for all citizens in Congress. Please state your full name and whether you are a resident city member. All citizens in Congress are limited to five minutes per subject unless the city council has further request. Is anything like the. You mind if we do water portion to get a shot and. My hands to screen is that point. Because they didn't have a lot of information. That's your call. Uh, we can give you a chance. Remember, yeah. There are a lot of reports when they have nominations. If you need to, so you don't have to do it right now, so. Um, I thought about that as a name. Any other words speak? Right. Both businesses, we have the first Michael. Who has the date that's the general report. Uh, they are two thirty. And one sixty three. And one hundred and fifty. Happy beginning. Evening.
You want to hold on tonight? Do you want names? What's going on? Congratulations for the great initiative. Before the six vision, we're submitting the KDA. And we're doing the order of the reach construction from Slane. And we're doing the job reaches to find out what their anticipated timeline was. The ways are just uh, in spring, anyway, wait for them. Your schedule is a little bit certain this time, but I hope it gets started this year. Or we'll see if it's a bit of a, because I'm a bit of a, so. Let's watch this out here this summer, that you might see it through. Of course, there was this case you might see something happen here, so. The waste half project, all the building locations are finishing up. It's still a good way to get that. A lot of the contractors, right? The offshore project for the sidewalks. The locations are established. You'll have to hurt it again from the contractor when they start. So my contract has a week to date, or the office. You don't have to get started over the next Thursday, because it's very late today. I'm enjoying it. Besides, I don't want to do the project. I think that's great. Don't make the fine. The location there are like the damages. Saying the contract answer that there's two guys. It's doing that. We can do it in the fourth. We will do that. We're going to have this thing for the day that they give over. The KDA speech project on that list. This is how those final plans, certificate, ever reported you. I want to help does it mean the process we do in there? We did that. We can hear you very bad. Same service steward. It's just that I mean, the. The long history of that store. It was a deep city problem. So I think they have a. I'm starting the project.
We're waiting on manholes.
The pre estimate holds for thirty days. Let us reach through our system. We can uh, clarify our student plan or Atlanta's. The world of the city is going to have some information before we can follow our plans and keep it consistent. We're going to do. Turn lanes. I have K one fifty six, K one forty. There's one of the videos that I had. I'm just beginning to promise some time in the season. You know, I just didn't have it yet. That's what I have to do today. So the request that there's capacity.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Right, so the next part is a good job. Oh, that is the approval of the state contract for the multi project. That's the general report that's agreed. That's one sixty four.
So this is just up for as encouraged by Michael to be the consultants, is that correct, John? That's for the project on behalf of KDA in the city. So it's a three-way contract. And the cost is already embedded in the uh, the quote that you've already gotten. So this is just a part of that. Because they cannot manage the project or touch it without that on something. Okay, this is it.
Thank you very much. This is just a lot of me problem for some of this maybe not now council. A project has started, everybody's thinking for sure the past to do this law may also have selected for. All the case case election. Quarters for section at the same time. But we can have a pause until say after he's working next. That can be a process. So this is the really three part of the year to take care of. By all means. It's a massive cost. And for Michael to go pick it up, it is a family car, it's a car and. Uh, just to insert the zero setting and keep the documentation, things like that. So this is going just the. Part of these. Finally, the gradient of KDA for the money. And this will be eighty percent of KDA. For the service. It's eighty percent for your services. KDA will actually pay us directly. You give our authorized to make the payments, KDA.
Right.
Here's one percent.
Right.
Instead of being pretty good, new service and what's in the KDA. President Johnson has made the motion to approve the state multi use. The KDA project. Because for coast. Especially that often. Any discussions in the head of this? Any further questions? You can add a question to the general. You want to give your number there, say hi?
Hi.
The plus.
Hi.
The three favor one post. Right? In America, that's it. Okay, we got it. All right. We're going to motion for this. For the business recognition. On the promotion of the police officer, just with the grading. And every hour I know.
Sorry to interrupt there. Can I, can we introduce a new staff?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Come on up, Chase. This is Chase Miller, our newest water steward technician. And I just wanted to bring him before council to say hello.
Thank you, everybody who was listening. Yeah.
And I just, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Speech.
Yeah. He's all good now, yeah. Good people.
Thanks, Chase. Welcome.
The council, Mr. Ball has presented near council packet. With the three of the words of Mr. Ball and then the attached letter that I gave you recall. Um, definitely at our base scale and in our uh, job descriptions a few months ago. You were able to shuffle and retirement of. But Jack have been on here. So one of those shuffling was they need the rank of the sergeant. Um, and honestly, they made my job very difficult to the. Certainly to, they could have staffed them, so we're going to have two sergeants and the last man standing, right? So they don't know, you know, they're going to find out who we want to do that here tonight, so. Well, off the green and uh, off the wild. We're speaking to your top three fighters and all been uh, bringing uh, employees examples for what has to be what. When they go to work, community members to see when they see a police officer and the way they handle things and. That's just their business, but they're a little hard weirding. So, I uh. Luckily, and we're going to start it up here, guys, to recognize them and issue them their sergeant badges. And then they can get out of here, so they can do their thing.
Congratulations, guys, congratulations. The caster, yes, that's going to be very. Keep moving well, okay. I stand that John. You can call them, they're the babies. So we're probably like, yeah. Where's the, where's the congratulations? And we're happy that it's uh. Um, do we, we do. Oh, no, sir. No. No, I'm just going to go down. And with the pay bands, I did have, I was going to swap them post, like.
What are you doing? Any questions for us? I know, I'm just going to present, tell them to be congratulated more soon, so. Yeah, we come to. We will be, I'm going to try to, the double shoot, not really very difficult and. I'm sitting just sitting here, though, both do. Different, I'll be to the challenge of that. One, like we had a great time. Appreciate it, thanks. Very good, very good, yeah, okay. Well, smart here, so. There you go. That's all, those are the things. Yeah, it was. Just for.
You know them, I may, uh, we should go that route, just. You get into the bedroom. Yeah. Your other right.
It's kind of. It's.
Standing for those who are exact.
So the, the next time our agenda is the approval of the water department, take a lot of the batteries. The approval of the water department, job description updates and sign of pay bands.
Soon. So as uh, the same, uh, the same that I've been doing with each department, I've been going to departments just to define roles. And set up levels. Uh, Joe and I have been kicking these back and forth and um. Uh, this is what we came up with. This is established as four levels in the water department, water tech one, water sewer tech two. Then a foreman, same, same uh, same uh. Format that I use for the streets department. Because they require additional certifications and whatnot, and also uh, due to my research in the industry. They do get a higher paid than the streets because they do have to get additional water certifications as a requirement for their employment within two years. Um. So uh, this is my recommendation to council for approval. Just to continue to define things, it also helps us to improve the morale of our staff. You know, it sets boundaries, it sets expectations of what I can uphold them to and um. Continue to try to move us forward. And improving the organization.
It looks good. Moving on.
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to approve. The approval of water department job description date and sign payment.
That's what I have to do. To approve the water department job description date and sign payment. Not supposed to, I think I have one. Any discussion today? Like, I'm saying, thank you, I don't know any. I think it's a good one, because. Nothing to refer. But it's been a good two years. Yeah, so it is. Um, any question, ready for this time? I think I'm right. Yeah. But. And then, you know, the, 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 uh, the. And you can say, I got. Those. Those are good. Uh, so this is the water void for performance. Um. So this is my real. If you do a little bit of history on it, so. These four, that's my real turn, David, was Michael's approach as this day. We've done that has really. You know, he can be against that, so. What's happened in the past, you know, say the way it all works, the loss of all network. Probably. Not the best, we don't have enough people to do. Yeah, so. That's somebody you call off, say, maybe John. So that's kind of how we do it. And hopefully they sit in and do a good job for the most part. Though I understand. It worked out very well, of course, and very. So. Successful over the years, uh, after the audience test, or. If. He's for the four-year term and another four-year term, it's now eight years. So, right. Then it's come back for the other four-year term, when you clear that. He is not going through this formal term. The American state and board president, I lost. If you don't know this about. He spends a lot of his personal time maintaining whatever. Lots of success, whatever you do. I mean, there's irritation. So, all in the middle of something. The fuck he does, he's five and four. So. Much of the team wasn't said, hey, this is how they want it to be, or. The way I understand it, well, secret traffic. The technical weeks that decide whether there are seven members on the war or ten. That's a transition decision. Currently, there are seven people for. I think there are three open positions, right, testing? Yes, sir, that's currently it's working. Um. That is not real, I don't understand. It's a lot of this, for a lot of reasons, I think it would be very hard to manage. Um, it would be hard to maintain that level of all the chairs. How, how, you know, kind of. Multiple components every year, it's going to be a lot harder to handle. It would look different, and there are people for. Helping the library, helping get involved now. My chief was there, there's one thing. Nothing, and most of that comes out of God, and this, but I think first it is whether you want to be that or not. I'm looking for ten people. Does that make you my boss? I'm ready to go. Some of the things that's. Uh, but this is kind of that thing. But I think we need to kind of have a discussion. It's not the first time I was.
Yeah, I was trying, I haven't looked at the specific. What's in for, so was there anything between that, and I don't want that out, or is it just trying to look at that?
Well, I should have had the. In the past, it was um. My favorite, I think, most apart. It seems to have lost it. That's a public. So that's one of the last things that we need to do. Change the way it's set up in most other places. They've got that citywide, so they better put their name in a letter, just that's what they. I had all. Know, maybe the things. Who's in the first part, I have a warning, just uh. We can't say.
Seven plus one de facto, my honor should be the mayor.
That's all there is?
Yes.
What is.
The charter, I mean, I don't know off the top of my head.
Because I don't know. I have to say, it's hard here for me to basically move into this. Or I'm sorry. If you. You answer what I'm asking. I have to be a. My worst business, sir. And we don't. Third one, right? So you don't need to know. Would be for the policy. Whatever policy.
Two plus one reappointment.
So. For seven members. The details of the.
No, not that, not to my understanding. Let me pull up the list that I have. Six plus the de facto, uh, sorry, so six plus the, the mayor is seven.
No, six. Yes.
So mayor, mayor.
Good.
I think it's seven, you know, it's kind of. Yeah. It's seven.
So one vacancy is what I, if I'm reading correctly. You see.
That's seven.
I mean, my apologies. Hmm. Thank you.
So yes, it's seven. So.
Please do your point, make it. I mean, if it's worked like this.
What if there's.
There's three people. Yes. So there's four still on.
No, no.
The mayor doesn't agree quite. Daniel. You know. Seventeen people, they decided to make it all size.
Two people. They have a good position. It's going to be a player. We're making an assumption. Who's going to get in turn? Four percent.
So we don't even know how many people are on board.
Yes, we do.
Okay. It's been.
As you guys want to increase it to ten or not.
I don't want to, I think seven's fine.
So decision one, we've increased it to ten. Decision two uh, is your appointment.
Everybody we checked, you want to rest? The council will walk through. My, the other. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, they are black. Uh, yeah. Well, I know. I wasn't very good on this stuff. Since I was there last week. I've never heard this. I have a. Let's see, let's see, for five. This is. From the. This is about the library, you brought it up. Don't, don't speak really, didn't go on. Okay, you just start the person. On city council. Well, this is. Did you, you and I have a talk about that? Go ahead, Tom. Go ahead, go ahead, okay. Simple library class, what are you working on with that, or the viewers? When I heard the chat say one of the. My first. What I did. I think it has to elaborate for your number of contact information. Does he want to take the board, he's going to keep me off of board. My three different tear covers to say. And he gives the sign of that. Well, I see.
It's always been seven, correct?
Yes.
You said it. And I see who, that is. It was only seven. Doesn't make any sense.
Well, I guess I'm not going to vote for anything if we don't even know who was on it or how or even how it votes.
Their permission is off.
It's all.
Your authority is on. Yeah, it was on. The deal was.
It's. It's one, two, three, four, five, six.
Those new. I had to check myself first.
What's the other one?
No, they do, it's in the next. You go to the list. Okay, I didn't agenda report.
That's right, see you.
Okay.
The everything to announce in Dale are expired as of May twenty twenty three. So the, there's four of them that expire, and there's three that are. Is it according to this one?
Mm-hmm.
So it's two of those.
There's.
Three.
Ten to eighty.
The minimum, so.
The nails also for free running, but yeah, there's. So there's essentially three. Morning decisions that expire many of the ones. And there's top will be born. Probably centers with this one.
Yes. Just to say. You have to do a challenge, I just. The wall's not amazing. Right here.
Who wants to say? Say, do we need to say? It can, where is this? Can't go somewhere.
He says, I'm trying to think, I didn't have this. Get a word to you. Then. Then a library is like the last one. But children do that, enter that protection. It's not, I'm trying to think of the order. See, you got all right, please. It's not just to have a good place. It's in the models. First, you don't want to give the individual this, which is part of us, I think. Do you talk about the problem, and I'll give you. Or, or. Well. City pastor, I think, my battery. And so I've been listening. Right. So I'm going to stay in. The test has gotten incorrect information. If you heard this. We go. Uh, this from your spy. Just the. And I. We have a big. Secret. Correct, we give you what we. It's been many times. Strangers, uh, things like that. These are all. Going to work in there. I'm there. Anything? So, anything? The castle. The persons. Right, the components of art. If they said positions. You have a lot of. You have a stair portion. And you had a war report, those are the reports. So I have a word. Yeah, he was the one that. Thank you.
Because you're a part of the general plan. You know. You're a person. Or change things. Yeah, I'm outside, though. Yeah, and then I just thought, well, we, I, please do. Look at my soul. Or does he get any?
See, we didn't mention, we talked, yeah.
Cause that is our mission.
But it requires going to all these, just the. Uh, uh, legally, you can never say that you would be residents of the city, the boroughs. You kind of, is that? The most of our, we have hearing. And who has it, it's a question, you guys, or. Okay, I didn't approve that.
That's not me.
We're going to stand by it, so you play the. Here for.
You need your care, please.
It's usually good. Yeah. So we cannot make the performance.
Yeah, you can. Just one back there. That's your call.
We're putting one back right now. We're going there at this time of night. You know, I got a little sad, you know, you're not on right now. This is, you better text. What's the courage? And I hear. Good. All right, well, I'm still.
What, what?
I'm not considered. I think we saw some other right here.
I guess I feel maybe.
Yeah, a little bit small anyways.
Hey, sorry. But your reaction to him. To me, this is more like personal, I should allow.
I'm.
Personal. Okay, you mean, he's the only one deeper that I want to provide for the board, so I feel like that kind of stuff. I don't have any tomorrow. Something you want to do that. And then everyone. So.
So maybe.
We can get people to get on there, let's get them on, that's fine. Let's do. He can't watch, to be honest, I don't know anything about it, so. You pick it.
So. You're asking that any of these are already bought off, I mean. She's here. I wonder your partners, and we moved up, and we would never even have to be in the store.
Do you want to stick it here? I don't think I need to tell them. Well, this is what you do, that's okay. We can have a little bit of a time. I'm just on the two, so that's not good.
And at the will of the board, whatever they want to do. Hmm. This is the next library meeting.
One day.
Hopefully, we don't need a tiebreaker. Well, you're the de facto member, so I guess we're okay.
All right. Do you want to take the next meeting or do you want to? Approve the same. And what? Maybe she's going to be anymore, or any of that, that's what I see. Well. Yeah, this is. But this is. Also, we're going to consider, or at least more information. First, I can't, I can't resist any of the. We could be all the. This is all, this is. This is. Yeah.
What are the comments?
One, two, three. This is another request, please, sir.
I can get you the charter. But tomorrow.
Can you understand?
Well, the only thing is, it's Monday, I don't think the library will have a forum with the three missing ones, will they? Chairman, the president. Will you have a quorum on Monday if they table this until the next meeting, President?
Well, we know.
You asked.
I don't know. Is there anything you will need a quorum for in May? I think the budget's the main one. You guys approved the budget.
The post.
Okay.
And this is.
Yeah, and I've got it. Yep, I did.
Yeah. It's one of the rest. I don't think you give a hundred and dollars to me. Sorry, man. It's okay.
I'll get it tomorrow and I'll get it to Kelsey. Hmm.
Okay, so the table, whatever water on this, regardless of regain, all of us. And you have the, we stick this term directly from the following artist. In town, the medicine, and it's a viewer. This is. Running in town. You know, you know, um, and the panel. Um. Doing the bottom of this. We also have the, uh, the checker. And you can. For those who are kind of the other quarter. Um, we just support us, and it's wonderful. And for the first, um, this is a. Um. Then there's some words that need to be addressed, only at the next meeting, while I regard persons. Um, there. Um, any questions on those parts?
I don't know. I don't have anything. Looks good to me there. No.
You do.
I want a public motion to approve the, uh. The department head. How do I do?
You're going to see the mayor, annual mayor one.
Annual mayor, mayor little appointment, I didn't say that, right? You guys know what I'm. It's.
I mean, you know, this, maybe you need to. And they all, one of those, there's going to be stuff that will keep discussing. I'm not getting all of this, yeah, I'm not. But those. Right, it's a. And it's a little. This becomes a word. Uh, under the word, the message committee, how far. Substance abuse task, or, um, it's.
Hey, Mayor.
Yes.
Um. And much if you have an issue, I'm not, I'm not here to, but at the Gulf Board, we got all of the people in the Gulf Board did agree to stand for another term if you're willing to have them. Just to knock one out, since it's already. Jim's, uh, you have.
Sonic and marketing.
What she said.
It's.
Sonic.
This is what I'm like, you know, right now. A little.
This is your right point on.
You want.
And then also the airport advisory board, Mayor, Barry Kochmeyer. And I don't think I'm pronouncing it right, thank you, what she said, again.
Where's your word?
Uh, um, but, uh, that's the only one due there, if you, if you, if you have no issues, I would. We can knock it down.
Obviously, he's been.
Yeah.
I mean. All right, so we want to. So the worst of the market again. It was.
Denzelonik.
Yeah.
Z, V, O, L, A, N, K.
And then the Els, sorry, I missed this one, Mayor, Elsora City Housing Authority only has one. Open vacancy, or not vacancy, but, uh. One that's due for reappointment, it's Exie Barber. And, uh, we reached out, or Callie reached out to Exie, and she said she'd be willing to, uh. Sorry, thank you, Pete, uh. He said he'd be willing to, uh, serve another term in the housing authority, if that's your word.
That's one part of this. And there was. What was the? Yeah.
I'm about to. I can just.
There's a lot of people there, yeah. Right, so. When you know, when you're very smart. You have a good idea, I get it, it was cool, and all. And it's people on the. You know, we're going.
Els with Substance Abuse Task Force, I don't know what that is, but, um. Russ D was on it last time, so I don't know if you want to do a point me or point someone else, but that would put that up to the next meeting. That's the only other loose end.
Yes, well, do that. I was in, keep the police, uh, went with the city council and the city administrator. Some of them need to be changed, probably, but enough to become obvious. We wouldn't, we're not still very passionate with you, so. So I was going to say, yes, this. Well, this is all looking for it, yes. Yeah. All right. There we go. And we have to keep. To this day. All right. All right, so there, I'm going to, everyone goes to work again, just a lot of, basically, about the authority, that's just damn well, or run it out. It's one of us. You know.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve those mayor. And.
My customer was maybe, he wants to approve those annual appointments, talk about that, that most of the, they, Justin. And so. All right. You know, there's a lot. Those. I don't care. All right, I'm going to stay here. All right, you got the. Retention of the most of the state attorney, um. Was the last thing you talked about, we talked about. We got a visit, but I think that's about, I talked to each other. Remember, you don't need time, or we ever did that, I think, that. He was, uh, where is this, another guy that I was too often saying, but I told. Right, and we had a last year, so just saying, just saying. We have, I mean, at least, you know, um, so. That kind of matter, and, uh, he was like, I need to produce, and he was nice, I told him, he was happy. Um, we had an interview last year, we were on the, I was called. And hopefully this year, we'll be done, and, uh. The end of this one, the reality.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve to retain the Wilson Miller as city attorney.
That's the reason, as you're looking to retain, well, the state attorney. Now, I'm remaining in a second motion. Anybody? So.
And we're going to win, they are. For again.
Moment, the most of the crisis, sorry, I made your part time, and I respect.
Man, this is a request, I want to do a start, we're trying to stir, this, I just want to make it clear, this has nothing to do with pool staff, I'm not going against your, I'm not requesting to change that. This is just for part time temporary help, what inspired this is trying to get a hold of streets. Uh, folks to come work for us part time and seasonal, and, um. Uh, in the process of trying to do that for fifteen dollars an hour, there were some staff members that were left behind in that, and I'm just asking to boost their. Starting pay, so I don't feel like I'm being inequitable with the temporary and part timers that I have. And I'm trying to bring on for the season. So I'm just asking for your permission to, for the staff that still work for us part time regularly. To get them up to fifteen, so I can find some part time help. For the streets and. Uh, other, uh, the streets department mainly, while Nick is gone and playing army. Um. To try to get some people here. And like I said, this is separate from the pool decision, I'm. Not applying this to that, it's just more for the streets department, so I can get them help. It's all.
So I remember, I'm going to approve. And we need to raise the, certainly, part time and summer staff. It must be down to two, three, four. What's it?
Can I say next to the mayor, will you approve, start up a part time temporary staff, fifteen dollars an hour? Also, post a second motion. Anybody can sign this off us. I'm being a little bit. Five. Those. I'm going to, thank you, Ken. I'm going to come to, we're going to walk out of today, uh. From another day, for creation, it's not here, I'll see Patrick or all of us. Um, I don't see. Well, and so is the mayor, see. Whatever was in here. See, if you want to go to that day. Looks like every one of us. I don't know. I think it's maybe. My short attention. My apologies. From somebody's attention. Before the vacation, it's what offers. Now, my mission stand while I was questioned about officers and the safety aspect, and setting on your highway, very close proximity of the. Go ahead. Um, and as I explained, that I just stand on that, I'll stand there, about the safety aspect of it, that I was going to be too. I'm going to make stuff, so I, I, I told Mr. Carroll that I'd want us to keep a police conference, I've come with state of mind. Here, and I forgot, I don't, and I didn't bring it up, I was there, so I had a reassurance, and I'll reach out through. Um, still the chief of negotiations, so I'll leave it all, change, and just how you get together agencies that. I had that safety dynamic. Three meter, and then a lot of some minor injuries around, and also worries, what else has been said, we did one of that, still had a, uh, you know, a little safety barrier. This was just brought up just to be in the end, so thank you. And they're all, so, I don't know. I appreciate it, I totally stand why they appreciate me, that's why I lost the ball on, because I just never, so, uh, it is a beginning. But, uh, I said, I fully. They have a long, I said, but, uh, for sure, in the novel, only back on next maybe. Small press, suited, having maybe, or maybe, or two percent, what we've got to come from, come up with, and ways that you're going to. Whatever you think of, or whatever you're going to dedicate for. Um. We're having a little, not a lot of. Just for open position, I'm not too biased, we know how to fit, we. We, uh, we didn't discuss that one, they did, they were, my office, that's a very common trend, right? All I want, but I knew that. But I still thought we would not follow that, and we had, so, let's, there are three stats, we're doing a thing from LinkedIn, some other places.
Indeed.
And indeed, to advise the people to apply, uh.
Indeed, this. Mother.
Just so that it helped, it's all paid that for me, I really appreciate that, but hopefully, the line shared, and they're on certified, so there won't be that, but it'll be a good version of how a patient presented. Um, definitely, last week, there's a, this week, so we hope the next. Few weeks, we'll be able to officially offer somebody a position. Um, because we do know internally, when we back down, we will probably. Who's another hospital or something, another agency, um, so, really hoping that if we can get this, and so, uh, we speak back for the police academy, and use our next one. And I'm going to be. The expiration, you know, the officers, you know, they're reparenting, they, uh, too, I think it's been a little, uh, a little spiritual back, so, I get that, I'm a big, I'm a big, Mr. Campbell, for. I think that's on the boss, because I wasn't going to do so, so if you can get a time, it's free to find it, so I was, I was pretty much by that word, so. So that's why I'm going to decide else, we did it, we just got, people's, and it's all appreciated, and that. Well, maybe during the next. The, so, I don't know, sorry, you're beginning to do our next option. So. It's not, I have, I have something for me. Yes.
I've been reading about this. A moment, so the other day. And I haven't remembered that, I, I was walking to the hospital the other day, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't notice that the. The fence went down, and I didn't know if that should be back up.
I mean. Yes, right, like, it's, it's better than nothing. What? You know. We don't, we're doing this, I mean, when she said I want to do the wrong, that what? Well, we want to find him sixty minutes in certain things. I don't know, I'm going to, I think, in the week's time, that's. No, he. Mayor's data is an issue, and sort of trying to mess it, but it's not, oh. It was not the difference, we have a lot of citizens in there, unfortunately, and this is, sort of like this. I don't get any calls, I don't used to. I mean, by, you know, you were being reported, people were in the building, uh, that, not happening much at all anymore, either, or, she used to say, no, that, because. It's making people, a lot of people were still calling, you know, my god, it was a couple years ago. Um, so. I don't know. If we can, that's not good, that is already there, or is it just? The male.
I don't know that it's, I'm sorry.
I'll be.
Yes. So.
It was, it was. Something, it was, I didn't think, so it was. Where do that, any others, so, uh, so. You know, sorry to.
We're trying to. There's a big, I want to go with all, we know, we're gonna get those, that's still the owner. They currently in my, we found a lot of extra, more of that, yeah, but then crossing somebody's face and. I don't know, it's a problem, it's not worth it, it's three water, water, and it's very boring, kind of best I can, just. It's not our role, it's their time, and we should do a little bit, but. We actually walk away, and we know the things that we're trapped on to. So I'm, I'm concerned, but I can't say. So, I think that's very, very, very lost. People, you know, they're melting, that's. So. From. Don't put that out, but yeah.
From a nuisance perspective, we could hit up the owner that way, which was, was on between Delvin and that. And Mr. Bishop, we could do that, but then it goes back to cost, who's gonna show up? Or the news, uh. You know, I, I, some things I've thought about is at least going back to, you know, uh. To cover our bases. You know, do, uh, do like a orange nest, that, forgive me, I'm not a construction individual, but you know. The snow fence, surround it, and then put it on the tax rules at least, you know. To, uh, do it that way, but we wouldn't. Thanks, Chief.
I'm seeing, um. So, just wanted to hear. Those factors, just, um. Actually, that's not what I'm. We're filming in the state, so. Um, so that was not your station, it was the everything. Okay, um. So.
Um, obviously, we are going to be conducting interviews for Mayor's position next week, I've kind of reached out to some of the applicants, and we're kind of starting to schedule that, so. Hopefully, we can get that position filled in, that's what I have.
I've already written you a seven-page diatribe, but I'm. Trying something different, uh, so that way the, everyone else can see what I send you as well. Um, but I did want to touch upon the water real quick, uh, and just to let you know where we're at. Um. And for May, uh, USGS has thirty-five years of data, and they expect this to be at thirty-five. Cubic feet for, per second. In the river, and right now it's a twenty-eight point eight. The good news is, based on historical data, the lowest they've ever reported is at ten feet during the Great Depression, so. At least, if there's anything positive about the levels, it's that we're not at Great Depression levels, but it is. Something that I at least wanted to bring to your attention, I am keeping, checking this daily, it's not getting any better, and June, the expected flow rate is supposed to be forty-five PFS, and. Or is it still twenty-eight point eight? I don't know what you want to do as a board, but um. This has me nervous. Yeah, that's all I got. Um, uh, it's, it's dated, so I can. Um, and it keep, it constantly keeps historical levels, so that, the, the main thing is, if it doesn't get any higher. Um, I, as your professional administrator, would recommend. Um, going to restriction, that's my opinion at this point. I, I don't know, at this point, I would wait to see what the reins do, but uh. If it doesn't get any better, I would feel like it would. I would not feel comfortable. With voluntary restrictions, if it doesn't go up. But I, I don't know how you want to handle it, I'm new here, so I know some of you are more seasoned, I'll be relying on you all to. Guide us and help.
Yes. It's about, uh, one of our parents association members. Forage parents. Uh. Was asked to post inside of forage parents here about, no, no, alcohol, tobacco. It was, I called him, and I talked to Dustin, and I talked to Melissa, and I sent them any mail today, so they were able to connect. This to this with the parent this weekend, and it's. Um, with the state colleagues, our state friends. So, when I talked to Chief, he said, well, it comes over in five, well, of course, it's a, that's people to need to change. Um, right now, because the environment today has like, oh, we're just a big party, I've heard of alcohol, so like, there's nothing saying that alcohol, you're supposed to. I don't have to, my building, so. I'm going to know. And we can change it, that to, it's up to the vendors and discretion, and advising, I don't want alcohol, I've been, then. Kind of the police department can enforce that.
You know, we have no T, that's, you're, I've got it out there, but somebody has a wedding, and they're like, hey, oh, we don't want alcohol, and it's without a parking lot. You know, there's a lot of good news. Also, a lot of enemies have no T, even though, you know, they can, we can make the leave or request, we have some, some liquid there. But as far as we know, alcohol crime, you know, uh, I would be, I totally support. My age, you know, alcohol, tobacco, and stuff like that, we did a lot of kids, I thought they're fishing during the better, and this, stuff like that. Didn't also worry about that, you know, making sure this new law, it's sending a lot of cellulose to the wall, so. I feel, Melissa's, really, I thought it's kind of you got a reward in this, that allows it, but also this a lot. But I'm also, like, that would need to come, maybe somebody must have read it. I don't know, the forty bucks are coming here, I don't want. I like it, I like it, I don't, we could talk about that. There's a good thing to be handled internally, remind the administration, that I'm here, but still give us. I don't think he's left.
So. Well, that's what I was gonna ask, Melissa, can't we do it by, uh, by each individual lease, because I know four H is, I haven't heard back from you yet, but I know the four H and I were working on a lease agreement. Um, couldn't we just make that four H's lease with the city? Or would that be favoritism? I don't know the legal snags with that.
You're saying it's been a separate lease?
Well, uh, they're, they're gonna be renting it long-term, so to be fair and equitable to everybody renting our space, they would have to give one anyway, but. Okay.
Right.
Yes. Yes. If they're renting the space. Then it would be based on their rental agreement for the time period that they rented, is that correct?
Yeah, what they. That's not. It's, it's different if we've been saying. They're not allowing alcohol, you know. They're released, and we don't allow alcohol here right now, in a term of.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Also, I think we can, some of our revenue. You can support for fun, uh. So, like, just keep that according, but.
It's not something that I've heard, it's like, oh.
Yeah.
What else can we leave, they think. My bad, I'm.
Yeah.
You know, um, I think it's all been bringing all for it, it's back. I don't think that's my answer, you know, you need to be silent. And, um, there's nothing, there's a lot of, extremely tobacco. A lot of, I don't think more people, whether it be in Berkeley or in X place, sitting on that floor, whether the wedding day. Are we going to allow that, and it's brand, and it's, it's, it's. I'm, the sun is, it's all determined now.
That makes. Okay, got it. Parade is principle, yeah.
So, looking at the latter report, I think we go from. This is when they call them, or the, that, you just kind of. And I have the one that is done, also, most of you could. Really, you find out. But I'm staying in the dozen streets. After. And we got this time, every ten, seven, nine. And the major, major points, whatever, E or P. The signs to get the point. They don't, they don't get to say this point after.
You're ready to present, and then I'll go over to.
I think, so here's what I'm for. Well, that's. They don't like you, but I didn't see anything that. If they, if they. We still.
Yes. It is all. I don't know. But the premise is the way you're saying, if they're, if they do want to prove, you made another one there, and I mean. You can get stuck in a loop, progression, and. There's some, some other pieces that I don't want to, and I can bring up on a, like, you know, which is true, but I think you're right on the topic, I didn't have anything in the overall order since where it was addressed at all. So, I was, I think, just the whole statute, so I think you're right on that, for sure.
Yeah. And I just, just a one, stand up, stood for others. So, I think it was, for whatever reason. My biggest, so the beginning. You're just like, you know, the whole court history. Look at the last few days, there are. And then making points again. And making all that, that important. From the back of that, and then we'll have awards, on the works, and we'll chat about it all. You know, kind of meeting on a day, but. We want to make this happen, but. You believe in the work, you want that? I think with also, this seems here is probably, I mean, that's better, it is. You know, at least, yeah, so we get there, and for our, for next. He needs, and is, and, you know. You know, um. He's been, uh, we've been, been evaluated. But I don't know, see, how other cities about, yeah, actually. Strips, and then he's gonna talk about to, kind of tie his property. Their property, um, down, so, we still have the, um, something, because they have. Their calendars. Um. Well, it's just, I got us all, two days, we're having the Christmas party. It goes, you know, welcome to the town, uh, they're gonna be the. The celebration of that. Um. You know, to. I think. We're not getting a lot of rights, they're awards, I think. But even though. The more details, the more, we can, we can, I think, more. There is, I feel like, wow, this is very often. This is, this is, this is. You know, we did a lot of different things, do you, do you want, give us, you want, and also. I heard from a lot of the contractors. So, you know, it's, it's gonna be your discretion. That's a lot of something that, uh, not a lot of money, actually. We need to do that, so you're, you're in the fourth piece. You know, I already said, how much money do you have down there? You know, so, you know, I'll, I'll, you know, I'll, and I would, the most thing I can, I mean, that's what I would like from you. You know, I think, I believe, um, I've heard of it, and I was just, I don't know, you're being serious about, but. We need to, one, where you can come and kiss around here, and say your stuff, anything. You know, this is gonna be all, you know, my, the. At least, I'm gonna say, you know, it's so, it's a lot of that right here, and if you think, oh, that's great, you know, I mean, one of the, that's what you did, that's why. So. I'm, you know, about, you know, the. Come here about, and, you know, on the, um, the time that I'm there, and. If you don't want to do it. So. You know. That's like, yeah, very, very. Well, that's, that's, maybe not everybody, maybe, perhaps. Right. Don't you, because many of you are reading off our, it's, 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 you know, for the day, you know, it's, it's, uh. Of course. I'm, it's, it's, yeah.